I'd like to call the Township of North Huntington Board a Commissioner's regular meeting for Wednesday, July 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Role call, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Stumpf.
Here.
Commissioner Atwood.
Participating via telephone.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Zona.
Here.
Commissioner Wingren.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
President Haggas.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and opening prayer by Pastor Poole from Calvary Church?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just for all.
Would you please bow your heads? Lord, we thank you so much for the abundance of what you've placed under our care. We thank you for the leadership of these commissioners and throughout this township. God, I pray for your blessing on this meeting, the decisions that are made, the resources under their stewardship, and that you would use them, Lord, to set this township up for many years to come, that our residents would experience, Lord, the abundance you've given us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. If any residents would like to speak tonight, could you please sign the book of the podium? Thank you. First resident's Daniel, if you could come up to the podium and state your name and address, sir.
My name's Daniel Burry. I live at 1681 Efnor Road, and thank you all for being out here. I have one shout-out to the zoning department for what they've been able to do with the piping that was put on our property without us knowing it. They were so efficient, the next day they were out there before I could have my second cup of coffee. I really appreciate what they did there to take care of that, and the problem was resolved efficiently and quickly. And the other matter with the zoning, I think I talked about, you folks, about that barn on Efnor. We'd like to see some movement on that. Nothing seems to be happening there, and I just want to bring that to concern. I noticed some of the major beams out in the roof had fallen down on some of the vehicles in the garage. There's some other ones teetering. I'm just afraid, you know, somebody may get in there, a kid's nuisance, and get that taken care of. If we can see some progress there, that would be cool. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next resident's Ken, if you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi. My name's Ken Gray. I live down here in 270 Brownstown Road. I just got one question. It's basically for the police. I've called up here three times and asked for one officer, whoever's in charge of repainting the lines on the road, and not one responded back. So I figured I'll go a step higher. I called in on Friday, asked for the chief. They told me the chief would get back to me. Nothing. So yesterday I stopped back up. I stopped in person. Nobody at all could talk to me. Again, they said, "Get back to me." Here we are, two days later. This has been going on for two and a half weeks. Communication is bad. The police department does a good, great job. I mean, it's still a great job, but all I wanted to know is when you can come out and repaint the lines. I'm trying to pull my driveway, and I'm getting passed because I'm going too slow to make a left-hand turn in my driveway. Coming up the hill, nobody there. Somebody's gonna get killed down on that road. Nobody's been down watching them lines for probably two months. All you can see or buy is Route 30. There's more roads than this township besides 30. I need to know if these lines are gonna be painted down. I got told, but they cannot sit down there because they can't see the lines. And the speed sign, I got told it was broke. Two of them were sitting down on Center Highway two weeks ago. That used to be put up on the telephone pole. I got new neighbors down there. I got a five-year-old and a six-year-old kid. They said they wish they would have never bought the house in this township because the road down there is so busy. I need, we need the answers. If somebody can let me know if they're gonna come paint the lines, see if the chief can come out and make phone calls. Communication's bad. It needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next resident's Otis. Just come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. My name is Otis Sarbo. My address is 442 Butterfield Drive. I live in North Huntington, Pennsylvania. A couple things. First of all, for zoning, Tom and Josh, I do want to pass on a thank you to your department. I've had some really positive interactions. I had a building that was rezoned. It's gonna be a daycare center now. They did a great job putting it together. And then with Josh, on code enforcement, no issues at all. If there's any concerns, it all gets addressed. But I do have a question on item 11-4 on the rental property registration ordinance. I do run the Landlord Association for Westmoreland County, and we actually meet at Jacktown once a month. A bunch of investors meet. So on the agenda, it looks like there's maybe a resolution on an item on there. We have no idea what's going on. We don't know what it entails, what the purpose is, what caused it, what's driving it. There was no communication at all. My big thing is, if there's any decisions that are made that affect landlords in housing, because there are some landlords in town, and their voice should matter, would be just a matter of bringing them to the table, and whatever issues there are, or whatever ordinances are being considered, I think that the landlord voices should be heard. If there's a problem, and my big question on item four is, if somebody, please help me understand, like, what's driving it? Is something causing, you know, rental registrations, you know, because sometimes a lot of landlords look at this as being very intrusive. You're going into properties. You're gonna start doing inspections or whatever. We don't know what the agenda is, but I think we need to know. And then the most important thing is to have landlords have a voice at the table, you know. What's, if there's any concerns, let landlords address them. If there's a problem, give landlords a chance to address them. Without that, then it looks like, okay, decisions are made without the full picture, and you don't want to leave people out that are stakeholders. So that's what I want to pass along. Can anybody explain to us what's driving this? Because we have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the agenda for later, so the board can discuss it and maybe try to answer your questions at that time, sir.
They will, as far as like what drove it, what the purpose is, and what caused it to be on the agenda. Okay, because I think it's fair to have an understanding of it. So, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Next resident's Adam.
Adam Painter. I live at 2261 McCannon Road. Much like Otis just stated, I'm here looking for some clarity and some understanding into what is driving this rental registration, and why we are moving to intrude on not only our lives, but our tenants' lives, your residents' lives, and understand what exactly there is to gain from it. I spent the hour watching the last meeting on YouTube, twice actually, and reviewing and trying to understand exactly what the bigger picture is here. And as Commissioner Gray brought up several times, it sounds like all we're doing is moving forward with incurring more costs to the municipality than what good it's going to do. And if it's not going to collect anything immediately, how are we going to have Ryan and Josh and everybody that everybody already agreed with is overloaded, as is currently, deal with doing 700 inspections of rental units a year? Just trying to have a better understanding of what exactly there is to gain and why it's on the table. Thank you.
And our last resident tonight's Dominic.
Commissioners, my name is Dominic Lucarelli. I live at 14165 Roberta Drive. Also part of the Landlord Association with Otis and Adam. Just wanted to pretty much just echo everything that they were saying. We're all open to some communication about this topic, and as far as that goes, I'm sure there's some sort of a resolution or some sort of middle ground that we can find to kind of bridge that gap. They both pretty much nailed it on the head, so I don't really have much that more to add. So I know you guys all collectively have a lot on your plates, and I appreciate every one of you. I know that this is not an easy thing that you guys are doing, so I don't take any of this with a grain of salt. So I understand you guys have a hard job, so eager to work with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other residents would like to speak tonight? Did they get a chance to sign a book? If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Linda Wayland. Riedinger Park, 111 E1. Riedinger Park, North Huntington. I'm concerned about the south tower and the traffic that it's gonna bring up our lower road. It won't affect my driveway, but at the lower road. Plus, just to, I mean, there's a highly autistic child right on that road, and I'm really concerned about him, and it happens to be my cousin. Also concerned about the tower itself and the, like, what precautions are gonna be, or what are the dangers and the fires? If a fire would break out, how's it gonna be taken care of? Are they gonna be trained? These are all volunteer fire departments. With that being said, this is literally in my backyard. This property has been on in my family for 98 years, and you want to destroy woods, wildlife. It's a shame. Just hope other people feel the same way.
Thank you. Any other residents would like to speak tonight? All right. Not seeing any responses, citizens input. Director Fonzie, could you maybe follow up with our code enforcement to maybe see the status? I know there was a work permit posted for the property for that barn on Efnor, but maybe just get a status update.
Yeah, Josh did receive a phone call from a contractor that wants to dismantle that barn for the wood and possibly rebuild it. So he said that he wouldn't be available until sometime in August, so we're just sort of crossing our fingers, yeah, hoping that that happens, but we're keeping an eye on it.
Thank you. Then Mr. Gray, maybe Manager Falk, you could reach out, talk with the chief, or Officer McCurdy can maybe follow up with you, sir, and try to get those lines painted back in and get some better communication reached out to you, and possibly get some patrols down on Brownstown.
Have you seen me after the meeting? I'll get your information, and I'll pass it on to the chief. I know he's in tomorrow, so I'll make sure that, I'll instruct him to reach out to you at least. All right?
And I believe the next few residents, Adam, Otis, and Dominic, having some concerns about the rental registration. That's on the agenda. If the board's okay, we could address that at the time it's on the agenda. And the last resident was concerned about a cellphone tower. What was, if you don't mind coming back up, what was the actual property that was in question with the cellphone tower?
Were you referring to the lithium ion battery farm?
Okay, sorry, I thought you said.
When you said Riedinger, I figured that was it.
Okay, so you're talking about that project?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess we've kind of only looked at that preliminary, so I would say maybe pay attention to our minutes, and next time we have a public hearing on that item, maybe come up and express your concerns. Maybe we could find out some more information from the company as well, from them at that time.
Yeah, and right at the outset, now, they have a time period of about five years to get up and running. So they're still doing a lot of preliminary work with West Penn Power, and there's some research that they're doing to see exactly how the site's gonna be constructed. So, yeah, it's not like it's happening tomorrow, so, you know, if you ever want to stop by or call, or just to get a status update, please do.
Any other comments, assistance input? All right. Approval meetings, men's for the special meeting, 6:15-23.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. For the regular meeting, 6:21-23.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Payment of bills.
Motion to approve voucher number 22445 through number 22513.
Second.
Discussion. That voucher number was 22581.
518.
Yeah.
I didn't have my glasses on. I can't see that. That's my fault.
With that, are you okay with second?
Yes.
All right. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Staff reports, Public Works report, Director Albert. Anything to add to your report tonight, sir?
Well, you may find this hard to believe, but I have nothing to say this evening.
Well, I'm gonna force you to.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. The resident, you're aware of the sinkhole on Abrams with the exposed pipe. I think Bob wrote a memo about the pipe underneath needs replaced. The resident's still concerned about that, wondered when it would be fixed, and he, his concern is, he says there's a water line running through that exposure, and he was concerned about, over the winter, it possibly freezing.
Okay, I'll bring it up with Bob whenever I see him on Tuesday, and we'll see if we can come up with a timeline on.
That's fair. Thank you.
Any other questions on Public Works?
Is the brush hog back up and operating?
Unfortunately, it's not.
It's not.
Hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll have it, have it, you know, up and back in operation again. We're so far behind when it comes to our roadside vegetation, and, you know, we rented a machine last month. It cost us a considerable amount of money. I didn't want to do that again because of, again, the cost, but hopefully we'll be out and running again next week.
Thank you.
Anything else for Public Works tonight? Thank you, Director Albert.
Sure.
Parking Recreation's report. Any question on Director Miller's report tonight? Police report, Officer McCurdy.
Oh, thank you. Glad to say that the county commissioners are supposed to vote on the opioid money and release that possibly next month, which would help out a lot. The new hire, Brandon, is doing extremely well, as expected. He's in the FTO program, which will take a few months. Hopefully, he'll be out on the street and helping out our organization. And then we're starting up this spring at Norwin, the DARE program. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for the police report tonight? Thank you.
Sure.
Planning zoning, any questions on the fire officials' report tonight? Subdivision Land Development, Director Fonzie.
There are three items set for your approval tonight, three boundary line revisions. The first is subdivision eight of 2023, the Meyer Irwin Investors Plan, requesting board action to approve this boundary line revision on State Route 30.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero.
The second item is subdivision nine of 2023, the Masters-Lukowitz Plan, requesting board action to approve this boundary line revision on Masters Lane.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero.
And finally, subdivision 10 of 2023, the Poyer-Davis Lot Line Revision, requesting board action to approve this boundary line revision on Willshire Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fonzie. Solicitors' report, Solicitor Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no action items on the solicitor's report for this month.
Thank you, sir. Township Manager report, Manager Falk.
Action to approve the June check register.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero.
You have a copy of the budget report dated June 2023? Are there any questions? None moving on. Action to release the insurance escrow for 2357 Scotch Hill Number Two in the amount of $20,663.83.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to authorize the solicitor to draft the rental property registration ordinance.
I'll make a motion for that with the limitation that it is only a registration. It's not any particular rules or regulations right now.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Discussion. I'm opposed to it. I think the gentlemen in the room need to have an explanation of what it is. What I recall is, six months ago, there was talk of this, and it was very intrusive. It was not only a rental property registration. You wanted the names of the tenants, their employers, things of that nature, contact information for the tenants in addition to the owners. There was a lot more to it. And then it seems that when that didn't go over so well, that it was backpedaled to, well, we'll just do a registration of properties that are rented in the township. And I'm opposed to any of it because, once the government gets their foot in the door with the registration, it's going to expand to the inspections and the tenants' names, and it's just mission creep. It's inevitable. So I would like to shoot this down right now.
I would just like to voice my opinion for having a registration because there are tenants who are not paying their wage tax, and that robs all citizens in the township. When some people don't pay taxes, then everybody else has to foot the bill, and that is why I would be for this. I also expressed, I guess, my yes vote for enhancing safety requirements, though that was not part of my motion. My motion was just to have a registry with landlords to create a list of their tenants, and that is so we can collect what is due to the township on wage tax. But to go further with it, you're looking at the safety end of it, and if you've ever seen a child fall off through a banister, a lack of a banister or guardrail, which I have seen happen, or if you've seen a child burn in a fire that didn't have a smoke detector, you might have a difference of opinion on that. We are one of the few townships that do not have any type of occupancy inspection for a rental.
Well, I said this once before on a different subject, but if you could make it part of the ordinance that we wrap every individual in bubble wrap and then lock them in their rental unit, will save every life and every injury. I don't believe in that. Freedom has a price. Sometimes it's not fought on a battlefield.
And I will add to that. Landlords, when they're renting, should have an idea of what's causing them liability, and most landlords should have safety in their homes that they're renting. So it's probably, in most cases, we're not asking them to do something they're not already doing. But my, getting back to this, my motion was only for just the registration so that people who should be paying their taxes are paying their taxes.
And I do agree with that at this point.
Wrong. Is that not the tax collector's responsibility to collect the taxes? I'm just asking at this point, just so I know for sure.
She would collect who she knows.
Well, for the earned income tax, Berkheimer collects that tax. The tax collector collects the property tax, real estate tax.
Commissioner Goss?
Okay, so our tax collector would collect from the landlord, but Berkheimer would collect from the individual, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want some clarification.
I think Commissioner Goss, you had something to say?
I do. I know this might be out of the realm of what's normal, but based on what Virginia Stumpf said and Ron said, I would like to ask, Adam, Dominic, and Otis, what do they think about just a registration? I mean, what's their thought? Is it too intrusive, or are they okay with it?
Well, I mean, for what the motion is for tonight, is this action to authorize a solicitor to draft a rental property registration ordinance. So this is just making a motion to start the process of writing the ordinance. We would still have to formally accept and adopt the ordinance, so at that time, the stakeholders that are in the audience that spoke tonight could come up and make commentary on whatever type of proposed property rental ordinance we would actually vote on formally.
I mean, you know, thank you for the clarification on that, gentlemen. Appreciate you guys coming to the board with your concerns. In order for a society to survive, everybody has to do their part, and if there is anybody that's out there that is not paying their taxes, they are robbing from their fellow citizens, from their fellow men, and from the state, and so on and so forth. That can't be the case. We cannot allow such things to happen. But if we can meet somewhere in common ground where we can please people, and I think, nobody thinks that. thinks that anybody in this nation is above not paying their taxes, we have to. For the sake and the common good of this society, whether it is local, state, or federal, we have to pay our taxes. But if this is all that this goes, and it's just a registration to make sure that people are paying their share, and I understand what Mr. Gray is saying, I've seen government step way too far too many times, overreach. And man, and he said it earlier, Mr. Gray did, too many times the government seems to get a foot in, and they want more. And one of the things that Mr. Gray brought up, and I hope you don't mind me bringing this up, is the Johnstown Flood. It was a tax, right? What year was that flood? Does anybody know?
No. The original one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Somewhere. It was a long time ago. Right.
Eighteen thirty-six.
That's what I said.
All right, now watch what I'm about to say. That tax in eighteen thirty-six is still in place today. I understand that you needed it for a while, but repeal it and replace it. So my concern is, and that's going on with, everybody has great arguments, by the way. I really see both sides of this. I really, really do. But I also want everybody to pay their fair share. Nobody has the right not to pay their taxes and let others absorb their cost. And I hope, gentlemen, Adam, Otis, Dominic, I want you guys to please come back for more of this and more dialogue because it's important, and bring everybody that you know so we can have clarity on this, so everybody knows what we're voting on. So right now, based on what Virginia said and Ron said and Rich said, I see both sides of it, but I do want people to pay their fair tax. I think it's right. So I'm going to support that, but that's all the further I want it to go. If government starts intruding, I'm going to reverse my decision because government should not be involved.
And Eric, I will also comment that the Pennsylvania Turnpike is the same way. The fees were to end when the turnpike was paid for.
So do we have any other board discussion on this matter?
I do have a couple questions, or a couple, I guess it's just really my opinion at this point. So this registry is supposed to be as to who owns the property. So if you own the property, you're not going to be the tenant, so you won't be, we won't have any information to go after the earned income tax anyway. Only the property tax, but we can find out who owns the property by the recorder of deeds. But I also have asked multiple times what the spirit of this is, and I keep hearing to get the low-hanging fruit and to collect money, and I am not about to enact anything that will end up causing our people to pay more money. So I am opposed to this at this point. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? We have a motion and a second to action to authorize a solicitor to draft a rental property registration. All those in fair?
Roll call vote, please.
Yep. Manager Falk, roll call vote.
Commissioner Stump?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
No.
Commissioner Zona?
Yes.
Commissioner Wengren?
Yes.
Commissioner Goss?
Yes.
President Higas?
Yes. Motion passes five to two.
Moving on. Action to advertise an ordinance, amending and supplementing ordinance number 552, establishing speed limits for certain designated roads in North Huntington and designating areas covered by said speed limits, and to be incorporated into the code known as the Vehicles and Traffic Codes of North Huntington Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in fair by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to hire Shannon Beza Sable for the position of part-time telecommunications officer upon successful completion of pre-employment drug screening and background check.
Motion to approve.
Lindsey first, and I'll second. Thank you.
All those in fair by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to approve resolution number 117, authorizing the Township Secretary to sign the Highway Occupancy Permit Application for Pizza Marzella.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Location, please. Where will it be?
Pizza.
Next to the lighthouse.
Next to the lighthouse.
Yeah.
We've discussed that over and over.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in fair by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Action to award the Lincoln Hills Area Detention Pond retrofit project, contract number 2023-04, to JP Operations Incorporated in the amount of $404,064.10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so earlier, four hundred and four thousand's a lot of money. Is there any other money that's going to come from the county, the state, or from the feds?
Yes, we're going to receive $190,000 from the County Commission towards this project, and this project is an MS4 project.
Okay.
And the board did approve a budget revision earlier this year for $500,000 towards MS4.
And just to reiterate, MS4 is what type of a requirement? State or federal?
Federal.
It is. So that means it comes from the EPA, and then goes to the state for the DEP, and then the local municipalities have to abide. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in fair by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero.
That's the end of my report, Chairman.
Thank you, Manager Falk. Any further board comments?
I do, if the board will allow me, just about two to three minutes, please.
I already wrote something down based on some concerns for some constituents in Ward Seven off of Pine Hollow Road over near the Ardara. There is something called the WIIN Grant, W-I-I-N Grant. It's based for small, underserved, and disadvantaged communities grant program. On February 13th of 2023 this year, the EPA announces the $2 billion in bipartisan infrastructure law grant funding for participating states, territories, and tribes to assist public water systems in meeting Safe Drinking Water Act requirements for the folks located on Pine Hollow Road and Pine Hollow Road Extension Ward Seven. There is an existing and producing water line that's already in place but needs to be extended to encompass the remainder of folks not currently receiving said water except through well water. The request for grant money starts at the township level, then goes to the county level, then to the state, and then on to the feds. In this case, the EPA, that's our federal brothers and sisters, will decide based on a case review and a decision. Once the EPA, the feds make their decision, it is sent trickled back down to the state with the DEP, through the county, and then back to the local municipality. The desire is to have this $2 billion, some of it come to this community so folks over on Ward Seven off of Ardara, on 993 on Pine Hollow can get water to their homes instead of having well water. I'm asking that we take a look at this next month and put it on for the books. Thank you. That's all I have.
If I can just add to that, though, I looked that up too, Eric. It serves underserved and disadvantaged communities, and you got to read further. To be considered underserved, it says a community does not have household drinking water or wastewater services, or they're served by a public water system that violates or exceeds contamination levels. So we're not underserved. Disadvantaged, it has to be less than 10,000.
People.
Yeah, I mean, we don't qualify for this at all. We don't qualify for any one of these criteria.
I just, you know what, and I thank you for that. That 10,000 people, I don't know if that was, it doesn't specify if that's for the whole community of North Huntington, if that's just for the pod, the area of people over in that area. We'd have to further dig a little bit deeper.
I think if we're the ones that are applying for this, it's going to be the township. I mean, all of these criteria listed here, I mean, we don't fit any one of these criteria.
It's possible that that 10,000 residents might be in a census tract. So I'll do some digging and see how that highlights that.
Maybe our state representative's office to see if there's anything that we would maybe be eligible for.
Absolutely.
And I can speak from having worked for the federal government before. They do have lines that go through the municipalities as far as what they consider rural and what they don't. And like Harry said, those census tracts can be like in a village, like North Huntington is made up of little villages, and those census tracts can be. So it's possible.
So just by digging into this, this is what I'm going to call an RFI. It's a request for information. We can send it up the pike. It can always come back tonight, but at least we have the opportunity to give it a try and to serve our people and our community. Thank you.
Any other further board comments tonight?
I have something to say. Our friend Juliana over there has a special birthday this Saturday. I just wanted everybody to wish her a very, very happy and blessed birthday. Hope you have a wonderful weekend.
Twenty-first birthday. Happy birthday.
Now she's all red.
You're welcome.
Any other further board comments tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All unfair by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero, meeting adjourned at 7:38. Board of Commissions, prior to this meeting, held executive session to talk about personnel and legal matters.
Hi, Jason.
Hi. I appreciate you. I'd like to come to the town. I'm a little bit late. I'm a little 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 late. I told my side. We have to lose one of the little ones, so, yes, signs or something like that.
He hasn't brought enough against him. I'd say maybe he forgot about it. He didn't forget, he's just not following.
Yeah. Always a pleasure. We drink. We have to. 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 We have to.[1552.13]
Thank you. It's on the website that I can. North Huntington, you can just go to North Huntington Township.
Oh, okay.
And everything's on there. My number's on the front there. You can find anything. Zoning, parks, ordinances, everything like that. So, yeah. We were like, South of Towers, what? Congratulations. Good luck. Very great. Too much to do. I think pre-wedding anxiety, nausea. I may or may not have freaked out on his mother and sister. You're loud. I freaked out. I do a lot. To the boy where. Trying to get it out. Yeah.